Time to begin our regularly scheduled Baxter City Council meeting. For all, at the record show that we are all here. This time I'd ask you to rise to present the pledge of allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to our council meeting. This time I would ask if there was any additions or changes to the agenda?
There are none here.
Okay, any public comments? We will move along to the consent agenda. The following items are considered non-controversial by staff and are recommended to be read and passed in one motion. Any councilperson, staff, citizen, or meeting attendee can request one or more items to be pulled from the consent agenda. The item will be pulled and addressed immediately after the passage of the consent agenda, otherwise the following items will be passed in one motion. A) Approve the city council work session minutes from July 6, 2021. B) Approve city council minutes from July 6, 2021. C) Approve the special joint city council and utilities commission minutes from July 15, 2021. D) Approve the payment of bills and finance report. E) Approve special event application for 2021 Lake's Country Triathlon. F) Accept utilities commission minutes from July 7, 2021. G) Approve the KO storage addition to Baxter development agreement. H) Approve the Lot 1 Block 1 KO storage addition to Baxter Stormwater Facilities Maintenance Agreement. I) Approve Lot 2 Block 1 KO storage addition to Baxter Stormwater Facilities Maintenance Agreement. J) Approve the BNSF Railroad Crossing Signals Final Pay Estimate #6 in the amount of $588.70 for the 2018 Cypress Drive Improvements Project. K) Approve the Anderson Brothers Construction Change Order #8 in the amount of $8,499.66 for the 2020 Farina Road Golf Course Drive Excelsior Road and Trail Connection and 2020 Oakwood Drive Trail Connection Improvements Project. L) Approve the Anderson Brothers Construction Partial Passement #9 in the amount of $9,884.81 for the 2020 Farina Road Golf Course Drive Excelsior Road and Trail Connection and 2020 Oakwood Drive Trail Connection Improvements Project. M) Approve the R. Larson Excavating Inc. Change Order #9 in the increased amount of $32,709.25 for the 2020 South Sanitary Sewer Interceptor North Forest View Improvements and North Forest View Stormwater Outfall Improvements Project. N) Approve the R. Larson Excavating Inc. Partial Passement #10 in the amount of $204,999.49 for the 2020 South Sanitary Sewer Interceptor North Forest View Improvements and North Forest View Stormwater Outfall Improvements Project. O) Adopt the pavement management plan update to implement microcircusing in blue chip ceiling. P) Adopt 2021 water treatment plant needs assessment. Q) Approve the Anderson Brothers Final Passement #4 in the amount of $6,000 for the lift station #11 Reconstruction Improvements Project. R) Adopt Resolution #2021-058 accepting the Tom's Backhoe Services Inc. bid in the amount of $84,500 for the lift station #14 Reconstruction Project. S) Adopt Resolution #2021-059 approving the plans and specifications and authorizing advertisement for bids for the Section 6 area, Section 6 area A1 Stormwater Outlet. T) Install 30-horsepower pumps at the water interconnect building and increase the project budget to $105,100. What did I say? $150,100. U) Adopt Resolution #2021-060 no parking restriction on Cedar River Drive from Campbell Trail to Forest View Drive. V) Adopt Resolution #2021-061 no parking restriction of Campbell Trail from Highland Cedar Road up to Cedar Drive, Cedar River Drive. W) Adopt Resolution #2021-062 no parking restriction on Forest View Drive. X) Adopt Resolution #2021-063 no parking restrictions on Maplewood Drive. Y) Adopt Resolution #2021-064 no parking restriction on Road Drive. C) Approve Resolution 2021-052 approving a conditional use permit for joint access for properties located at 7746 Getters Road and 7702 Getters Road. A) Approve Resolution 2021-053 approving a variance to allow for the construction of a deck to encroach into the lake set bag for property located at 6148 Highland Cedar Road. A.B.) Approve ordinances 2021-010 and 2021-013. And Resolution 2021-054 approving zoning ordinance text amendments to Title 10, Chapter 5, Section 9, accessory structures of the Baxter City Code.
You can pull that please.
Pull A.B. A.C.) Accept planning commission meeting minutes from July 13, 2021. A.D.) Adopt Resolution 2021-065 awarding the 2021 microcircusing project to Aztec Corvo St. Cloud, Minnesota in the amount of $148,703.73. A.E.) Accept Architectural Review Commission meeting minutes from July 12, 2021. A.F.) Accept with gratitude a $500 donation from Baxter Lions Club for the Baxter 19 United Fund. A.G.) Approve purchase of squad radar system using alcohol forfeiture funds. A.H.) Adopt Resolution 2021-057 officially ended the COVID-19, locally declared emergency. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion to cross.
Set.
Any further discussion? All mayers say aye. All sirs say aye. Motion carries. Hold. What number was it grabbed?
A.B. Which is the ordinance and resolution related to the text amendments on accessory structures.
All right. If I could just ask a couple of questions regarding that. Just trying to make sure I understood it fully. I just think some of the wording there is worthy of clarification before we approve that. Mr. Doty would, if there's a shed or an accessory structure over 300 square feet, what I'm understanding this to mean is that it shall be, and you would have no discretion in this decision, shall be exactly matching in both material, color, and basic design features of the main building. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. There is some exceptions listed. If you have stucco or brick home, there is an exception to allow a material to be similar to those. Just a leniency in those particular exterior finishes, even for garages, because they're many times more expensive to achieve that for a garage. And then there is also an exception for the, but the rest of it is supposed to be a match. So.
So I guess like just for the sake of understanding this fully, if I have a house with, let's say, wood half log siding, and I want to put a shed up, and I try to put vinyl half log siding that looks exactly like wood from a distance, that's unacceptable, correct?
If it's over 300 square feet.
Okay. Word of good.
Yeah. I think the big thing that the planning commission wanted to look at is, is the idea of, and this got raised because staff raised it with a previous ordinance amendment that, where discussion got raised about the fact that we're seeing a lot of pre-made sheds, and a lot of the pre-made sheds that people buy don't necessarily match the exterior construction type, style. You know, you can have a gable roofed house and a gambol roof shed, for example, that's pre-made. It may be a vinyl sided home and the shed is wood sided, for example. Many other different variations in between. And I think the, the spirit and intent of what got proposed here is to create perhaps a more lenient approach on the smaller size buildings, 300 square feet and less. 300 square feet is a number picked because after you get above 300 square feet, there's moving permits required, and it just changes the, the whole approach to moving a structure like that into the city per another ordinance that we have for our moving ordinance. But that aside, it was also to step up on the spirit intent of, of matching to the home with those larger buildings. One other thing that, there is an exception to for the buildings, the accessory structures over 300 square feet. It does allow for a consistency with the principal structure in design. So there is a possibility for the design to be more consistent rather than an exact match. So there's, there's the design aspect of that as well as the, the map, the, the exception for the stucco and the brick homes.
And when you get over a certain size, you have to meet with the code.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to, to make sure I understood because I felt like, I love the fact that you're clarifying things and everybody can more clearly understand. I guess some of the concerns I would have personally, and I'm not opposed to, to what's going on here in terms of making it clear, but you know, you're, you're talking then about things that might, might be worthy of some discretion from time to time or taken away from you at the staff level. I, I don't know if you'd ever want to go back to that, but I'm thinking things like roofing material at a bigger shed might make sense to have a metal roof and might not look terrible. Or like my example earlier, you know, I guess thinking of, of the, the house I have, I have cedar siding on the house. So nothing but cedar siding on an accessory structure is acceptable the way I understand this, which you could have materials that look exactly like cedar, but it has to be cedar. It couldn't be a cement board or some other
Right.
very, very, very similar looking product. It has to be cedar, nothing else. So I
Yeah.
Not to, I'm just wondering if there are times where you might find that discretion would make more sense, or, or in the future you may want that, but.
Yeah, the point well taken, and honestly, the, the discussion, I think there's a lot of members on the planning commission that, well, with, as part of the discussion that, that like the idea of the match. You know, I think there's value in creating that aesthetic of a matching home and garage, or home and accessory structure. And the staff that was kind of really pushing the fact that these, you know, these smaller ones, there's lots of the community that really have very little interest in matching to the house when you can provide it. So, and that's what we see every day, you know, with a lot of shed permits that come in. And so I don't know if compromise is the right word, but you know, the, the approach taken was to maybe beef up the idea of matching with larger buildings where you're investing in a permit, a building permit, not just a shed permit, which is an over the counter kind of approval. And your meaningful building code to construct something, hire someone to build it, and, or building it yourself, whatever, where you're going to be able to match those materials a little easier potentially. But I agree, it could be something where we, we find that there's a number of people that pursue variances and we may have to reevaluate, I don't know. That's, your point is well taken, no doubt. And it's just, it's kind of a judgment call on which way you go with it. Our current ordinance uses the term consistent with, excuse me, compatible. And sheds under 120 square feet, under 120 square feet need only be compatible in color, but anything above 120 needs to be compatible in construction type design and materials. And the problem the commission had, had, had problems with on record was that is not a match, and you know, it's not strong enough to get what we want, which is that, that consistency of the materials. And defining that is also hard. So we just tried to, you know, propose an ordinance that was a little more lenient on the smaller sized buildings, a little bit more restrictive on the larger ones. But yeah, it could create variances or could create, you know, a frustrated homeowner that wants to use an alternative siding material. There's no doubt about that under the ordinance.
So did this come about because of a local issue, a neighborhood issue? I don't remember, among the long range planning commission, I don't remember talking about this, or?
No, that would, this discussion was at the planning commission, not the long range planning commission, so.
Okay.
Because they handle all the zoning ordinance amendments. So I, it was, it came of some past ordinance discussion, and basically staff had proposed to an ordinance previously that would have allowed sheds that were wood finished or wood stained or wood painted to be considered consistent with, because one of the things we didn't like is it wasn't defined. So we get these applications and turn them into the city, and you know, does this, does, does the planning commission, does the city council agree that with staff's interpretation of saying a white house that's vinyl sided and a wood colored or a wood stained shed is consistent with? And what we found is there was difference of opinion amongst the planning commission if that was consistent with. So the commission asked us to take a closer look and, and propose some clarifications within the ordinance. That's how we got here.
And 300 square feet, what was that matching on?
Again, well, 300 square feet is, is a limitation for, first of all, we don't get a lot of sheds over 300 square feet that where people buy and move. So anything under that is going to be your, the ones that you buy, you know, at any of the big box stores or those pre-made ones, it's a good cutoff to be in that category. Secondly, anything over 300 square feet requires a moving permit in our, one of our other ordinances.
It's been banned around for over two years. Yeah. And I think it got resurrected again with something that was going on over here. So I think we're trying to put it to rest, basically, but the crowd could never will be sleeping restfully with that was the goal.
And if this were to pass, there, there's, there will probably be some variances coming forward that we're not used to seeing. Because you're, you're very correct, it is a match. Gives us very little discretion as staff to do any flexible, flexibility in that regard.
Well.
So keep us posted on?
Yeah, I guess I, I will, that we approve this would be, you know, noting on record that I think there's, there's potential for conflict, like just.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? All mayors say aye.
Aye.
All sirs say aye. Motion carries. Following along, number 8. A.A. Approve ordinance 2021-012. Resolutions 2021-055. 2021-056, approve the preliminary and final plat of KO storage addition to Baxter.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a preliminary and final plat, as the mayor mentioned. There's also a rezoning application from C2 Commercial to Planning and Development, and a PUD general and final plan for KO storage. KO storage is currently located in Baxter and has an existing storage, mini storage facility that they are proposing to expand. Presently, there are eight buildings on the property and are proposing to, excuse me. Yeah. The applicant, rather, is going to construct eight additional storage buildings on the south side of the existing facility for a total of 15 total buildings on the site. So one of the aspects with the application is that they're proposing a PUD. They've requested some flexibility under the PUD request. I'll go through those in a little bit. One of the unique aspects of the request also is regarding their pavement plan. They are proposing to, and this would be not in the PUD flexibility terms so much as a PUD upgrade, they are proposing to pave not only their expansion area on the south end of the site, but they're proposing to pave the entire facility to the north, which is existing, which is all Class 5 at this time. So the site would become fully paved. One note on that is the PUD does include a two-year time window for the applicant, which is a request by the applicant to get some timeframe to get the facility open and get a temporary certificate of occupancy, allows some revenue to come in on that expansion, giving them two years to complete the paving. So one of the conditions in the PUD resolution that you'll find is staff's has drafted a resolution that basically asks for the applicant to provide a letter of credit to secure the cost of that paving for that two years, so that we can have that addressed in a, in a contract, so that we can ensure that that paving gets done after we give a temporary certificate of occupancy. Looking at the site here, you can see the site along Highway 371 and Edgewood Drive, the existing entrance coming from the east. The office is in this northerlymost building here. Looking at these existing, site, again, it includes the buildings to the north. This is the preliminary plat. The preliminary plat shows a new lot line that would go in an east-west fashion. The applicant has requested two lots related to their, for their purposes, for how they control the land moving forward. And so there would be two lot lines, there would be an easement created to get to the second lot, so it wouldn't be landlocked property, but there is going to be two lots under the plat. This is the proposed site plan, shows the stormwater treatment as well. You can see the existing buildings in the lighter gray to the north and the proposed buildings to the south. So they'd be building out to the extent of the overall property as it exists today, with stormwater treatment wrapping all the way around the entire south end of the expansion area. In terms of landscaping, the applicant has put forward a landscape plan that provides fairly dense plantings with an emphasis around the existing commercial that surrounds the property, specifically on the east and south sides. It is the back, facing the back of numerous commercial buildings as it wraps around kind of this end of the property. But nonetheless, the applicant has invested that their landscaping efforts in those areas, as well as some on the west, which is other commercially guided property that is undeveloped at this time. This is a picture of the existing buildings as they exist on the site, on the site today. Just to give you an idea, as I toggle to the proposed buildings, proposed buildings would have light materials as the existing building in terms of being a metal, exposed fasciner, non-architectural metal. This application was reviewed by the Architectural Review Commission, and they recommend an approval subject to a few conditions, which I'll go through in a minute. The other noteworthy change from the existing buildings to the proposed, you'll notice that this building has a much less roof pitch than the picture before. Obviously, there's a steeper roof pitch with the existing buildings. So there would be a noticeable change in the, the style of roofing, having a much flatter, I think it's one quarter 12 pitch roof. So pretty flat roof, but still enough to provide drainage. And the Architectural Review Commission did condition that on making sure the metal roofing and the metal siding matches the existing buildings, and also to make sure that the fascia, that there's fascia to match the existing buildings on the ends, not the length of the buildings. If you look at the fascia and the lengths of the existing buildings, it's, it's the same as kind of how this looks here, where you've got a metal edge, the sharper metal edge, if you will, and that, that matches currently what's on site today. This is more to make sure that the design of fascia gets on those handicaps to make a match as well. In looking at the preliminary and final plat, staff did use the C2 district as guidance because the PUD is set up to allow uses as allowed at C2, but also to allow mini storage. One thing to note is that presently in Baxter, mini storage is not allowed, in a lot of use in, in C2 commercial. Our other mini storage facility is also in C2 commercial, but they've been around for a long time. Presently, mini storage is only allowed in our industrial districts. So the applicant's requested a PUD so that the, the zoning can allow mini storage in the expansion group specifically related to this site. The plat has been reviewed based on the C2 standards for lot sizes of commercial properties. The subject lots would meet these minimum lot area and width requirements, with one exception, there is a 92-foot wide piece of property on the north end, and that's an existing condition on this entrance to the site off of Edgewood Drive. So there is some flexibility noted within the PUD related to that. In terms of other plat review items, there will be park dedication due for the southerly lot on the, on the property, and the applicant is aware of that. He would have to pay park dedication fees in advance of the plat being recorded. No right of way is needed with the plat, and access would be existing and, and wouldn't change with development. With the rezoning, the city did evaluate the conditions that are in our industrial district for mini storage uses, just as a, as a guide, if you will, for our review. There are, you know, you, there are a number of conditions here, I won't go through all of them. One item to note that, that is an area where it's not being followed per the industrial standards, it asks for fencing all the way around the facility. And in this particular example, the applicant does not have fencing on the existing storage facility, and they're not proposing fencing for the proposed expansion either. It is a quite large site area, so this is a, a larger development for mini storage. And in talking with the applicant, they're very confident with the face recognition cameras and security system that they would be installing on the site together with the lighting to be able to have security throughout the site. Talked about the exterior materials already. One other item to mention for PUD flexibility is, is joint access. Because there's two lots dividing the property, the PUD does address the fact that there is joint access between these two sites. So we would make sure cross-access easement is reviewed by the city attorney and, and gets approved by the city attorney and recorded with the plat, just to make sure, even though the two lots will be the same ownership, if one ever was sold, that joint access situation would be recorded against the title for any new owners in the future. In terms of drive aisles, there is some flexibility request on the north, requested on the north end, I'll just go through that briefly. This is the existing area of the development, so these are buildings that are already built, but because they're going to pave this Class 5, there is presently about 20 feet of Class 5 around these ends of these buildings. But the applicant had drawn up plans trying to meet the spirit intent of meeting codes, so because there's a property line here, they, they kept the 10-foot setback initially to meet our ordinance. The problem with that is that created substandard sized drive aisles and fire lanes around the building. So in discussing that with the applicant, revision was made to create 20-foot pavement areas around these buildings, which requires zero-foot setbacks in these key areas off the corners of the building. And that's to make sure there's fire lane capabilities around those existing buildings when it gets paved.
So will the remainder of the property after the property line be Class 5?
Right. So I think the, the pick the Class 5, good question. The applicant probably should answer that because it doesn't identify what the Class 5 is, but my assumption is that we are going to pavement for the site, so any, any non-pavement areas should be restored to grass. That would be the city's expectation moving forward, but I, you know, I encourage the applicant to address that as well. One other item to note is the, a two-way drive aisle is typically 24 feet in Baxter for our ordinance, so that when you have two-way traffic coming somewhere, you have enough comfortable space for those two cars to pass each other. They're going to be four feet short of that at these pinch points. Staff and the planning commission were supportive of 20 feet rather than 24 feet because they can't achieve 24 feet in physical space before you get to the lot line and in these locations. But also, it's a lower traffic use, you know, it's not like it's But also, it's a lower traffic use, you know, it's not like it's, you know, you know, a drive-through area or something of high tra- high regular traffic. In addition, there is really not an option, given this is an existing condition. So trying to get as much as we can for pavement that matches the existing class five anyway. That's been out there for a lot of years. Looking at the other orbit standards, with the exception of the drive aisles that I just mentioned, the applicant is meeting other standards in our ordinance with the proposed development plan. Utilities Commission reviewed the application, we have items on the agenda as well already that are identified, such as the developer's agreement, the storm water facilities maintenance agreements. Architectural Review Commission did, as I said, review and recommend approval subject to three conditions. That was the color matching and the siding and the roofing and and the fascia on the ends. With that, the planning commission is recommending approval, the Architectural Review Commission is recommending approval and so is the Utilities Commission, subject to the ordinance and resolutions.
Counsel, any questions? Josh, is there? Has the applicant to come forward and maybe address one of the questions of introduce yourself and then you heard the question, I think you could maybe expel him out of that one.
Good to speak with you. My name is Ross Stigler, Project Panther with Kip and Construction. And just wanted to thank everyone here on the council board meeting tonight. Staff's been very helpful in working us through this project, it's been a long time coming to work, we're very fortunate to have the help that we have and the guidance from you as well. Just to talk about the end of the pavement there, that will be restored to grass there where there is not to the existing lot lines. We'll have that kept maintained and cared for, that's typically what will be done. We can typically move that class five into the driveway to update and give some more class five to the exit drive aisles that are there until they're paved. But that is something that we can work through if that's something that council feels strongly about changing.
You have any questions or comments on the staff's findings, sir?
No, Josh and I have had many long conversations about this, about this project, can't think of enough. And Matt as well, kind of helping us work through this. We, yeah, like I said, we're very fortunate to have the staff and the help that we have for this project. We're very excited to see it go through and that when we finalize this project, it's going to look incredible. We're very, as a company and as an organization, we're very excited to see this go through.
What's your timeline for doing the additional builds?
So all eight buildings will be for the site excavation and the actual buildings will all happen pending whether it should happen in 2021. Should be starting as soon as we can go through the building review process, planning process, and all eight of those buildings should be going up this year. Hopefully, all concrete, all site work will be ready to go before we have our road restrictions alleviated. And then we can get our building crew out there to erase those buildings. They can put up about nine dollars a square feet in roughly two weeks. So they move quick and those facilities, those units themselves, they're going to reach anywhere from ten feet by ten feet to fifteen feet by fifty feet. So there's a little bit for everyone.
It's probably a waiting list already for the residents.
There is, there is, we receive very high demand and this is one bit of our best performing properties across the United States.
Any other questions regarding our leisure, is counsel? Okay, thank you, and thanks for working with our staff and look forward to you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
And and the truck too.
Make motion to approve. Motion by Cross? Second by Taylor, any further discussion? Okay, there's the I.
Aye.
Both same side of motion carries. Good luck. Move on to council comments. This is Lesio.
I have none.
Mr. Taylor?
I have none either.
Mr. Ward?
Just real quickly, I know that we've got a Bachelor Day out coming up here on August third, I think, or something like that. Chief, right, on that, and I I just want to point that out to people and, you know, make sure everybody participates, comes and sees our line enforcement and our, all of our departments, everybody else that's glad to get involved in that. And wish them all the best, but it's it's great to have that again. We missed it the last year for sure, maybe two years, I don't remember just what year it was. But it's great to have that again, it's always fun to get together with our residents or citizens or citizenry. And then also I just wanted to bring up to a council mayor and council attention and to chief and and resident's attention is Berrywood, some Berrywood residents have contacted some of us on the council about speed and things as such or whatever. And just before I came to the council meeting tonight, the gentleman that got home earlier, I shared that with, I think, chief and Brad and mayor, I think. You know, says he has some pictures that he wants to share with all of us too, so I'll talk to him about that. But what I what I guess I wanted to ask was, now this is the first time I've heard from a Berrywood, you know, you folks have been on the council longer than I, which is everybody. Probably have heard some of that Berrywood stuff before as well. And so, but from my own information, the mayor and I have talked about this a little bit. Over in Forestview, the new Forestview project, this, I have witnessed, personally witnessed, this electronic signs that are up there, speed that that flash your speed and then say, slow down, it's too high or whatever. I really see the residents over there slowing down, I really do, those are, I think, working. Now, maybe I'm, because I walk every morning and I see it, and so maybe I, maybe it's just a misconception of mine, but I really think that they work. How much are, and and so I know that we have a mobile unit and all that kind of stuff. So when we have an area that kind of is continually talking about speed problems, how much do the signs run? I don't know, Trevor knows that, chief or Brad or?
I don't know off the top of my head, but we can sure email it out to the council tomorrow, what it costs at North Forestview. I don't want to, I don't know it off the top of my head. Do you know it, right?
I think they were sixty-eight hundred dollars a piece installed, so thirteen-five or two.
Okay.
Not bad. Wire up to them.
What?
You got to wire up.
Yeah. Chief, what do you think of those?
It was about the same on Berrywood, we looked it up earlier today about, so between six and seven thousand dollars a per sign. But those were installed with the road project, so I don't know if the cost would increase if you're retrofitting. You'd have to find power. There's probably some savings when you put it in with the road project. Again, that's just a guess, but six to seven would probably be the low end for those signs.
So what 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 is your take from from line enforcement as far as on those signs?
Uh, well, I
We're friends here, chief, you don't have to hold back anybody.
You should probably come up here. Get this up right here. Get a picture of it too.
We talked a little bit about this today, they, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think they're working right now. Remembering when they've been up for a couple of years now, and I think they continue, that's totally anecdotal. I mean, you just get the feel that they're working. We do download the information on a regular basis. The problem with signs is you can at some point put up too many signs and then they don't work anymore. I have no idea where the balance lies with that. But, you know, if it's working, you know, maybe continue it. I I don't have a problem with that philosophy, but it's it's in the engineering world, they talk, I don't know, there's probably a buzzword for it, but too many signs distracts and you stop paying attention to it. But I don't think that's the case right now with these speed signs. I mean, I I feel personally myself lighting off a little bit when you see a number flash, so you hope it's working for others. Is it worth the, you know, six to eight thousand dollars? I don't know, maybe that's a decision for you as a council. We did, the mayor mentioned, a second speed trailer. We purchased our current one with Brainerd and it was a third split Baxter-Brainerd and then a TCD brand. And it was about five thousand each contributing on that. We purchased that probably two years too early technology-wise. There was a lot of developments right after that. Most of them now, if you want all the bills and muscles, they'll come with Bluetooth and they're a lot more user-friendly. It's all the mayor today, it's like putting in a launch for a SCU missile and we're trying to program the current one we have, it's just very antiquated and and not user-friendly, but but it still works. Moving forward, if if there would be the the need or the want from the council to get another trailer, I would probably go with a minimum air bones, smaller version on our residential streets, I think it would work. You see it a lot of times out in the counties, they'll have those, they're like mini-trailers set up. And they're working on higher-speed county roads, so I think we could definitely get something to work on a residential street. There is time, you know, putting these up and bringing them in. I do tend to leave ours out, you know, two to three days. I I used to bring it in when I was branding, we protected it. Now we kind of leave it out there, but the battery will last for three days, so. But there is that time bringing it in. We don't have community service officers or interns or anything, so that would fall on the officers to do that, but it's something we could task. So that's kind of a long answer.
Appreciate that, appreciate that answer, Doc, so, um, is Berrywood, is Berrywood an area that you hear a lot of on speed or whatever?
Yes, um, I'll be honest, I think part of the issue there is the the homes are are packed in tight on a fairly narrow street, so sometimes there's a perception thing. There is an increase in traffic right now, we understand that. I saw the email, I, you know, the FedEx drivers, UPS drivers, the other ones that he mentioned, we're not going to be able to to not allow certain vehicles down that road, that's just not realistic. We can, we have tried to increase patrol, but I'll be honest with you, we have focused our patrol with that detour right now. We've focused our patrol more on the Greenwood side, on the north side. That's a, in our view, a more realistic danger area because it's a tight narrow street as well. But you can get some pretty good speeds on that. Whereas Berrywood, you get to the intersection, I think it's Hinkley, and you take a right and it's just a little shot for me. Now, could you get going forty? Probably. But over on Greenwood side, on Berrywood it's wide open, you see what's in front of you. Greenwood is, that's an old residential street that's been there longer than most of us and it's been tight, so we've been trying to do some traffic stops over there. Not not that we're ignoring the Berrywood sign, but in our mind, Greenwood's just a once this project is done, that'll be back and we'll never hear from Greenwood again, but we've gotten complaints from them as well, so. But yeah, we've heard of the Berrywood stuff too.
Thank you.
And the the speed trailer actually on Berrywood, right now probably wouldn't work that good. I have set it up there in the past based on complaints, but I set it up north of the the close towns. As you go north of that towards Berrywood Park, I have room to put it up there and that's where the speeds can get to get going a little bit. Or right now, that's not an issue because they're not going through those corners or something.
So it sounds like staff has talked about this issue, it sounds like, so is is somebody going to get back to Mister, to the to the citizen?
We will, one of us will get back to him.
All right, thank you, thank you.
The other thing to note is that Berrywood Town Hall did submit a petition asking the council to
Need to pull your mic up there.
So I was just going to indicate that there was a formal petition that was submitted by the Town Hall Association to, for the city to consider expediting that southern leg of Cypress Drive.
Oh, yeah.
We've we've not brought that to the Utilities Commission at this point until we can present CIP that would have that inclusion so that there can be the dialogue with the city council as to is it in the five years CIP or not. So there will be further conversations regards to traffic improvements in that corridor that will be occurring over the next several months when we present a CIP.
Thank you.
Was was there, you know, we discussed it a while back, did we ever put a a potential date to it or was it just?
No, not that I can recall, but there was dialogue between on the council with the north leg of Cypress Drive, they have it first or the southern. The feel of the council at that point in time was to monitor and see which leg was getting more usage. I don't think we have the data yet just to say which one. We don't have any traffic counts on on Cypress just yet, I think it's next year, isn't it?
I think it's next, I think it's scheduled for next year.
Yeah. So we'll have some data to show usage of Cypress Drive to kind of allow for that discussion as the north go before the south or vice versa.
As I, to to Josh's comment, we're going to get back to him. I thought if there was a proposed date out there, we could give it, give that to him, that's what I told him, I said, we'll find out what's going on here. Uh, you had to step out, we're talking about the street budget. But one of my thoughts is that over the years, people would see that little speed trailer in another neighborhood, they said, why can't we have that? Why can't you? And it's become a prevalent thing, people are crazy, you know, and so my feeling was, I think I mentioned it to you, maybe we maybe we need a second trailer and then move that around to neighbors versus a stationary, you know, let's let's put the sign, it's it's a done deal. I'm not saying it's not the right thing to do, but I think I think the trailer gives more opportunities for more neighborhoods to 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 have that. I don't know if it works or not, but it's got to give a little bit of comfort, I think, to people to see that trailer. So he he was going to look up some prices on the trailer too, so we look up both prices and get back to us on options there, yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cross?
Well, I have to agree, and I guess I'd be pushing more towards the trailer. Because if it's only two or three speed signs, it equals a trailer.
Yeah.
You know, I'd rather see the mobile trailer than the the permanent signs because Berrywood's going to resolve itself when when we open up College Drive for the most part. You know, we we have a lot of traffic down Cypress that has to go somewhere, so hopefully they're taking College. Step up Berrywood. But I brought the camera back tonight, where'd I go, right down Berrywood? See a couple of gentlemen sitting in the garage watching me go by, but I hope they took your license, I might have, I might have.
I'll send you, I'll send you a picture.
You know, um, chief, I don't know if it would be an advantage at this point through the end of construction, negative limit parking on Berrywood. Because it is such a narrow residential street and it is part of a detour, whether it's an official detour or not. Maybe we need to temporarily signal parking on either side of the street until construction's done.
Well, my construction is set to be done the first week in August.
That's what I was going to ask, how much longer is that going to take?
Yeah, we're going to be, they're digging this week, we'll be pouring, we'll be pouring curb guard the first week of August. So it should be done by the third week of August.
Well, you got between now and then.
We got four, well, four weeks of construction.
Is it, is it worth it because we could potentially do that if we think it's worth it? I think, I think actually you can do it on a temporary basis.
Yeah, we'd have to sign it to make it.
It might still have some of those fourth of July, you know, part of the signs.
Yeah, I don't break me the legal order for once.
Okay, I just thought my only other comment is it's motorcycle season, please watch out for motorcycles. City Administrator?
Just wanted to let the council know that we're receiving some requests regarding deer population and inquiries as to special deer hunts. Just wanted to let the council know of that and to also let you know that in order to consider that this required DNR review and approval, they take those solicitations or or applications or requests typically in the spring of every year. So while we won't be able to do any any special hunt for later this fall, however, if there is council interest, then we'll have a discussion, have a future work session towards the end of the year to gauge your interest on that. To prepare for a 2022 consideration and application for a special hunt if it's warranted.
to prepare for a 2022 consideration and application for our special hunting that's warranted.
Lot of, lot of comments on that, a lot of deer on the highway.
So has there been any numbers back from our private deer hunting lots that we have in town as the number of deer that have been taken off of those? I think we should ask those organizers how they're doing.
I don't know who's organizing, to be honest with you.
But I know Vaughn is supposed to be the one that's scheduling who goes into the one over here.
We know some people that talk.
Yeah.
We had, there was a comment the other night. We had to group the petition over here for that twelve acres or whatever it was. Got all the neighbors to sign, red-train a residential area here because they wanted to hunt that and get the deer out of there. One of the, one of the neighbors assigned me, he said, he got a deer shot there. So I don't know, only fact of the fact that stuff is coming on. Probably, now, my place in South John's, there's probably a whole different story.
Sure.
We do too.
And the road is packed.
Some lives across the street from her, and he had a picture of eight of them the other day.
That's, that's the herd that I see when I hunt.
All right, city attorney?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, let's do an adjournment here. Motion. I have a lot of words. I can my press. Any discussion at all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good weekend, people.